Steve, can we do?
Certainly, Ms. Wells.
Yeah.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Ferguson?
Present.
Ms. Lynn Gallas?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
And Mr. Shulman?
Here. We have two members who are not with us this evening as a result, Mr. Williams can act on all matters on the agenda this evening. Okay, with that, under review and action on applications, eight dash twenty S P, the Housing Authority of the City of Norwalk one sixty-four, West Cedar Street and Suncrest Road, District Five, Block Sixty-four, Lot four-one-nine, extension of time requests for multifamily development with sixty-nine dwelling units in eighteen new buildings and new fifty-four hundred square foot community center building with associated parking and landscaping. And Mr. Bovilsky, I presume, is representing the Housing Authority.
I am, but Attorney Sutchi is also here to assist, and I would turn things over to her to start.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, I'm Liz Sutchi, an attorney with Carmody Torrent, Sandecan, Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford, and I do represent the Norwalk Housing Authority. As Mr. Shulman indicated in the initial comments, this request for extension of time relates to the twenty-twenty approval of an additional eighteen buildings to create sixty-nine additional units at Colonial Village. Currently, there are two hundred units, and if any of you have driven by recently, approximately sixty-five percent of those units are, have been renovated, both on the interior and the exterior. This project for the additional eighteen buildings creating sixty-nine units was approved in November twenty-twenty. And over the past two years, and we came back before you last year with a request for extension of time. This would be the second request for extension of time. And over the past year, a variety of things have happened, some of which are moving the project forward, some of which are out of our control, but have created some delays. But I'm confident that the Housing Authority will break ground in the middle to latter part of second quarter, beginning third quarter of twenty-twenty-three. Just by way of some background information, things that have happened since the approval, the Office of State Traffic Administration issued its decision, and that was recorded on the land records as is required. A Mylar map and certificate of special permit were recorded in February of twenty-twenty-one. The Housing Authority was invited to submit the project to both CHAFA and DOH. A joint venture partner, lender, and property manager has been selected. Feasibility study was undertaken. Updated plans were delivered to CHAFA. We expect ninety-five percent construction drawings to be completed by the end of this month, which are necessary for us to go to contract and select a general contractor. The Housing Authority hopes to do that in January. Permits then would follow probably in March. And after that, final CHAFA and DOH approvals would be granted. We expect the end of second quarter twenty-twenty-three with the loan closing thereafter. All of this brings us to mid of twenty-twenty-three with the expectation that groundbreaking would likely take place just after loan closing, sometime June, July, maybe August. So the project is moving forward. A lot of activities have been undertaken that you may not see and the city may not see, but they are all necessary in order for the Housing Authority to move forward with this project. Mr. Bovilsky, who is the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, is present tonight, as is Lisa Endo, who's the project manager, in case you have any questions of any of them. That's it. That's it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Galen?
Well, I just want to say it really looks so much better to the Colonial Village. I drove by it all the time. You know, it's on my way to a good percentage of the places I end up going. And it really has been a hundred percent improved. So I'm looking forward to the new development, to the additional housing there. That's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions slash comments? If not, can I?
Steve Ferguson has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I really pretty much have a comment. I think it's an awesome project. I myself saw when the signs went up and I circled there from time to time and really happy for Adam holding this down, and I'm looking forward to more projects around the city, Adam.
Thank you very much.
Can I have a motion to approve a one-year extension? JJ has made the motion. Is there a second? And Galen and Darius have seconded. Any further discussion? All right, if not, let's call the question. I think we can do this with a show of hands. All those in favor? Doesn't look like there's any opposition. Pardon me?
Thank you very much for the time. Appreciate it.
Sure. All right, let's move on in the agenda. Second item, twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-four, CAM one twenty-one Old Sagatuck Road, proposed new single-family residence. Someone here representing the owner?
I'm here. Can you hear me? Andy Summelydi from Landtech?
We can hear you, but there appears to be an echo.
Is that better?
I don't think so, but keep talking. Let's see.
Let's try this out. My video for some reason is down also. But can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
All right, perfect. So for the record, Andy Summelydi is Principal and Professional Engineer with Landtech out of Westport. The application before you is a campsite plan to tear down the existing single-family residence and replace it with a new FEMA-compliant single-family residence. What you see here is the existing conditions. Old Sagatuck Road here to the north, which is down on the page, a driveway that accesses a two-story noncompliant single-family house. And in the rear, you have a seawall, and then another seawall that aren't connected in between there are tidal wetlands. So there's a gap in the seawall. The property is serviced by City Water and Septic. Here you see the proposal for the new single-family residence. Again, the driveway accessed off of Old Sagatuck Road. You can see the remnants of the existing Septic system in the front of the property. The new Septic will be installed for a four-bedroom house. Apparently, the property also has no drainage infrastructure associated with it. So we provided drainage here in the rear, which is Oltext for the water quality volume of all new and previous services. We also added a new underground propane tank that will be trapped down for flood and with a new FEMA-compliant house. The first, the lower level of the house will all be breakaway walls, and then you'll have two stories above that, which comply to the stories and height regulations as well as all the coverage, applicable coverage regulations.
A question about the breakaway walls. Are there water vents in that first floor so that water can get both in and out?
So even though this house is not in the VE, the high-velocity zone, it was designed as it would be in the high-velocity zone, so it basically pairs with lattice work that breaks away, so it's basically all open underneath below, no flood vent, so it all just breaks away like it's VE construction.
Okay, thank you.
And that in a nutshell is our proposal. One of the conditions from staff was to bolster wetlands here, the tidal wetlands on the property by removing the invasives and providing an eight-to-ten-foot planting buffer prior to issues of a zoning permit, which we are amenable to. And I think that's it. I have to answer any questions.
Are there questions? No questions? All right. Then again, I would ask for a motion to approve the project. Richard has made the motion. Steve had his hand up as well, so we'll count that as a second. Any further discussion? All right, again, if not, we'll go directly to a vote. Again, I think raising of the hands will be sufficient. All those in favor? Nick, is your hand up? Okay. That's also unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, next, we do have two public hearings. The first is twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-eight, CAM slash SPR Thirty-two Night Street Property LLC, Thirty-two Night Street, District One, Block Sixty-eight, Lot Eight, exterior and interior renovation of existing building with medical office tenants, including the demolition of the rear half of the building and other associated site improvements. Let me explain for those who are listening in how our public hearings are conducted. The applicant will explain the project in as much detail as they feel is necessary for it to be understood. During that explanation, the Commission members are, of course, free to ask any questions they have about the project. Once the presentation's been completed, we will open it up to the public for comment. We don't put any time constraints on how long you can speak, but we ask as a courtesy to everyone involved that you keep your comments as brief as possible while making all of the points that are important to you. And we say that because you only have this one opportunity to speak. And we simply ask that you be courteous to everyone in your comments. Once we've allowed everyone from the public who wishes to speak to do so, we will go back to the owner's representative for comments regarding what they've heard. During that period, again, the members of the Commission are free to ask any questions they have. We will then close out the public hearing and move to action on the matter before us. And again, this first one is Thirty-two Night Street Property. And I believe that Craig Flaherty is representing the owner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the record. My name is Craig Flaherty, Senior Engineer and Principal with Redness and Mead, Land Use Consulting Company with offices in Stamford and Wilton, working on this project with Thirty-two Night Street LLC. Principal owner is Selixon Properties, represented here tonight by Michael Sorio. Also have our traffic consultant on the line, Neil Olenski, as well as some other members of the team should additional questions come up. But you will recall that two weeks ago, we opened the public hearing. We gave a fairly thorough presentation on the site, on the architecture, on our referral process to date, which was largely complete. The one open item which this public hearing was specifically left open to address were comments from TMP, Norwalk Transportation Mobility and Parking, as related to the traffic elements of the proposal. So I'll share my screen. Now, this is the site plan we shared with you last time. I'm using that to orient you and to show you some of the existing conditions around the site. This is the half of the building that will remain and be remodeled. North Avenue is to the north on your screen. Night Street is to left on your screen. Under existing conditions, whoop, that's not helpful. Under existing conditions, I'll have you focus on the lane arrangements in the streets surrounding the site. So right in front of the site, largely, you have one eastbound lane in North Avenue and one westbound lane in North Avenue. No-turn lane from North Avenue into Night Street. On Night Street, it is two-way for one hundred and fifty or two hundred feet to facilitate access to this property here as it's better served by a curb cut on Night Street than a curb cut on North Ave. And there are turn lanes in the right and left direction at the north end of Night Street. The rest of Night Street, starting at this bump-out island right here, that obstructs the continued two-way movement. So the two-way south ends there, and so the rest of Night Street flows in the north direction from Wall Street to North Avenue. So traffic is flowing in the direction of my hand. So as we the, so that there is off-site mitigation that will be necessary to accommodate this use, although the building is half the size as the prior furniture store use, it does generate more traffic and more trips, especially during the peak hours. And so it was determined that it was not desirable to have people trying to take a left turn into the site or a left turn out of the site from our north, existing North Avenue curb cut. And the solution to that is to allow folks to take a left turn into Night Street and be able to use the rear proposed entrance to the site, which will require us to extend two-way flow on Night Street equal to where that driveway is. And that's what I'll show you on the next exhibit. So at North Avenue, we're gonna turn this to a right turnout, right turn-in-only driveway with that island that discourages left turns. They'll also be signed appropriately. We're gonna add a left turn lane. We're gonna extend the left turn lane that exists for Park Street. So that's a benefit. We're gonna add a left turn lane into Night Street. And we're gonna extend that two-way section of Night Street down to the rear drive. When we do that, a few things happen. One, there are some kind of some informal parking on the west side of Night Street today that align with this new southbound lane. So we create these two parking pockets on either side of the road that will replace that available on-street parking for the business that operates on the west side of the street. It's worth pointing out that the three properties on the west side of the street are also owned by Selixon Properties, so we know who they are.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible for a car that comes down Night Street and parks in the back lot to drive through to the front lot?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that. Now, I'll tell you why. I mean, I think you're doing the right thing. But I don't think that that island in the front is going to keep people from making a left turn out of there or a left turn into there. I've seen too many of those that just don't work. People go over them. They ignore them. You know, if you're parked in the front, you want to go out despite all the signage and everything else. I just want to be on record as saying that. Again, you're not doing anything wrong, and I'm not sure if there's anything further that you could do. But I believe that's going to happen.
I will say, TMP has reviewed these improvements and is in general agreement with them. One, and two, before this is all finalized, we'll be requesting an encroachment permit from the State Department of Transportation, as North Avenue is their road. And so their traffic folks are also gonna have to look at it before it is implemented. We are gonna have additional signage on-site that asks, that notifies people that want to take a left turn to use the rear entrance. I don't disagree that some drivers may disregard traffic signage. But I think it's not that it's an unsafe condition, it's that it's a more efficient operation to have most of the people using the rear entrance to get that left turn in, left turn out. So there's nothing inherently wrong with taking that left turn. The site distances are fine. But that conditions in North Avenue will be more efficient with the signage and with the right turn and right turn out. And, you know, I think really it happens when it's busy, right? So as cars start to stack up and it gets difficult to make that turn, that's really the peak condition that we're analyzing and trying to accommodate. And I think during those times especially, people will find it easier to take the left turn at North Ave or to use the rear entrance. So we have modified our driveway here. So if people get to this dead end, they have an ability to turn around quickly and come back out. There's a little more detail on the geometry, on the technical diagrams of how this is designed. As I said, TMP has reviewed it, then agrees in principle with everything that we're indicating. And there is certain, in the draft resolution, we took a look at the suggested conditions. The applicant does not have any problem with the suggested conditions, including those that relate to the requirements. I will say one other thing. So the improvements in North Avenue, we all agree there needs to be a left turn lane. And as we go through the encroachment permit process, we're gonna be able to determine whether we can do that with just modified lane striping and no physical widening, or if a slight widening of the south side of the road is necessary to accommodate that geometry. And that has to do with a wide shoulder on the north side of the road where there is some parking use today, although it is not signed as such, it is used as such from time to time. So that'll be one of the things that we'll have to work out with DOT when we go through the encroachment process. But irregardless, there will be this mitigation implemented before we get to full occupancy on the building.
I had another question. One of the Commission members at the last meeting made a suggestion regarding some additional plantings.
Yes.
Just curious to know whether you have accepted that or not.
As I recall, Mr. Boushak said it was a recommendation, not a requirement, but our landscape architect has looked at adding four trees to the north facade, in front of the north facade of the building. And those tree types have been shared with the project architect. I'll say that they're looking at it. I don't know that they're ready to say, you know, that's something that we're gonna do, but they are looking at it.
Okay, thank you.
That was the end of my remarks. I'm happy to answer any question from other Commissioners or go to the public.
Darius?
Yeah, there was some discussion about a potential bus hub of some sort at the front. Have you been in communication with the transit district?
Absolutely. So we're indicating a bench close to Park Street. What I think has been done to address this is the condition of approval has been written, requiring that we coordinate that location with the transit authority.
And the intention is to have some sort of canopy as well, correct?
Currently, the intention that the developer will provide a bench and a pad in the area to put the bench. There is an easement available if the transit authority would like to put a shelter.
Darius, to your information, the district has always used a contractor for putting up the shelters. And then they share the revenue between the district and the shelter installer. So there's really no value added to having the owners do it. It's actually better for the district if they do it themselves.
Yeah, and like I said, the owner is happy to have the authority place it there, and we believe there's an easement sufficient to allow that in the future.
I think that's efficient as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we open it up to the public? Okay, seeing none. Brian, let me ask you to explain to the public how they can speak.
Sure. So for anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak regarding this application, you'd hit the Raise Your Hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. And if you're dialed in on a phone, you could hit star nine. So just in case, Raise Your Hand tool is at the bottom of your screen. It should be under everybody's faces. It clicked out once. Not seeing anybody, Mr. Shulman.
Okay, well, I guess everybody wants that cardiology practice.
Yeah, no closing remarks. I think our due diligence is complete. We've gotten all required sign-offs and given you a full presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll close the hearing and move on to action. Is there a motion to approve the project? Richard's hand went up very quickly. Is there a second? Nick has seconded. Steve also seconded. We should probably go to a roll call, and I'll ask at the same time if there are any comments before we vote on this.
So this is as written in the memo provided?
Right.
Which I think in this one, it had the solar. That was in my mind. There we are. Thank you.
And then here, in case anybody missed it, I had sent an updated resolution to you guys this afternoon after discussions with the applicant, where we kind of went over and hammered out the TMP comments. So most of those were addressed under fourteen. So I think satisfied everything there.
All right, let's go down to the bottom. Okay. All right, let's do a roll call vote on this. This is a, we're voting on a resolution to approve the Thirty-two Night Street Property LLC project, which are, will be medical offices.
Right. Mr. Williams?
You're, I'm sorry, Darius, you muted.
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
I'll go last.
Okay, Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Now I'll turn to you, Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes, did you ask Mr. Rowena?
And this Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Rowena.
Okay.
Grudge, I'm not sure what it is.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time and consideration.
All right, we're going to move on then to our second public hearing. I don't believe it's necessary to explain again how these are conducted. But it's twenty twenty-two dash oh nine, excuse me, P O C D Planning and Zoning Commission Amendment to the two thousand nineteen Plan of Conservation and Development, known as the P O C D, to adopt the Norwalk Industrial Zone Study dated September twenty twenty-one as an addendum to the plan. Steve, you want to present this?
And again, I apologize for having to show you this on an additional time because of my notice issue, but I'm going to, the presentation's not long. I'll go through it as quickly as possible. And just just so everyone's clear, this is just an amendment to the P O C D incorporating the industrial zone study into the plan. We're not discussing any of the zoning amendments or the zoning map amendments, just the simple amendment itself. So just to kind of like give a little bit of background, the the industrial zone study came out of a recommendation of the two thousand nine citywide plan, also known as the P O C D, where there was a strong desire to make sure there was adequate land available for future industrial uses, as well as looking at the types of uses that are appropriate for these areas, reducing conflict between certain land uses. An obvious one is that we talked about quite a bit contractor yards and residential uses. And then looking at the current regulations and see where changes need to be made. There was a committee put together which had representative representation. At the time, there was a separate planning and zoning commission, but we do have the three representatives from the two commissions are serving here as well. Just a little bit about the timeline, the green arrow on the far right kind of shows us where we're at. So at your last meeting, which was on the nineteenth, you approved a series of map and text changes pending, and those take effect pending the approval of the amendment to the P O C D. We did go through a pretty lengthy study process, which involved interviews, outreach, polls, public meetings, lots of conversations with folks. And then this commission, as well as conversations with the E C D Committee of Council, had, you know, we probably met with them four or five times, and I met with you guys at least half a dozen times to go over the specific zoning. So there was a lot of discourse on this and where the final recommendations came out. Some key findings, recommendations from the plan was really looking at making sure there were definitions for all the different types of uses, making sure the zoning classifications were clear and simple and they made sense, correct the zoning boundaries so that they're appropriate based on the different land uses. Understanding that there were going to be changes, there were several recommendations on incentives for those property owners, such as additional building height, parking reductions and other uses that might be complementary and supportive of those commercial uses. Overall, there was a reduction in, and this might have been a little, since we didn't make some changes on Bowden Street, that number might be a little high. But at the the plan recommendation was over a seventy percent reduction in the I one zone. But also an increase in the area where you could store commercial vehicles. And that came with several caveats on where they could go, how they were administered and regulated. We also tried to, which I think we did successfully, was distinguish by definition the difference between a contractor who's just storing vehicles versus somebody who's got an earth processing yard where they're creating dust and a lot more noise. What you just heard at your six o'clock meeting was the compendium study for the waterfront, which obviously the draft plan is out and we're hoping to move on that early this year. And what we talked about at the end of our last meeting on the nineteenth was looking at the Norton site. The study recommends putting in an I two and then looking at that more closely, which I'm sure we'll talk about at some juncture. The three main areas we focused on, which were adoptions were made, were what I call the Perry Ave main, Perry Ave, Main Ave area, East Norwalk, including Norton, as well as the industrial properties that kind of parallel the railroad tracks. And then we had a lot of discussion on the different industrial uses within within South Norwalk, because that was really where the bulk of the properties were, plus much more complex area to deal with in terms of the land uses and the types of uses you have from property to property. There were additional areas that were cleaned up in the Wall Street area. And we also looked at some uses along the Business One and Business Two zones, where you do allow certain types of manufacturing uses. The study broke those, the industrial uses down into kind of like four categories, even though we ended up with two industrial zones, it kind of classified them in four different ways from heavy industrial to kind of a mixed-use industrial, where you might have then like a boutique and an artisan-type industrial. But we ended up settling on three different definitions for industrial and two different industrial zones. Very quickly, we talked about this quite a bit and we passed this at the last meeting, which was the Perry Ave, Main Ave area, changes from Business Two Industrial Two, East Norwalk, which was I one was this area that parallels the railroad tracks as well as Norton, where that moves into the industrial number two zone. Main Ave, excuse me, Wall Street area, where there were, you can see there were some legacy industrial parcels and some neighborhood business parcels in and around the Wall Street area. It was recommended that those just go into the central business district because it just makes sense given the land use in and around that area, as well as what you just saw on the last application, which is the Lillian August property, which is right here. Lastly, South Norwalk, which was a little more complex and we made more changes in that area than we did in other areas. There were changes and recommendations that some of which you kept, some of which you changed as a result of recommendations for council, as well as changes that came out by the purchase of the South Norwalk School property. So we ended up somewhat close to where the recommendations ended up, but not exactly. And we had a pretty lengthy discussion on why we came to those decisions. Again, the plan's recommendations are, we want to look at twenty-first century industrial uses. How do we incentivize property owners to do something different? How do we get uses on those properties that are tax growth generators, job generators, clean industry generators and things that aren't detrimental to neighbors? So that that's kind of the vision for the area and what we're striving for. Hopefully, the zoning sets that up and then the city on the economic development then can follow through on the kind of promotion recruitment aspect to get those businesses into those properties. Again, here's just a quick example of the types of, you know, modeling that was done, looking at different building typologies. We also ran several scenarios, looking at properties based on their land use, what was there and what could potentially be realized by rezoning it and looking at different uses and the increasing number of jobs that could be created, as well as the increase to the city's tax base as a result of some of these measures that might come forward. Again, here's just another build-out example of some of the things we looked at. And we did go through these scenarios at prior meetings, so I won't spend a lot of time getting into specifics on those. Kind of in summary, there was, and again, this five hundred thirteen acre number changes a little bit, but in some of the corresponding changes as a result of the final final edits we made, but there's a pretty significant decrease in the amount of heavy industrial land. But at the same time, we opened up other areas of the city for commercial vehicle parking with the differentiation between kind of that earth processing yard and that commercial vehicle storage, where it could be like a plumber or HVAC guy, for example. We did open up areas along Main Ave and Route One for light manufacturing by special permit. We did make a pretty significant reduction in South Norwalk in the amount of total industrial land, just based on what's happening in the neighborhoods now. There's going to be a lot of non-performing contractor yards, but we did adopt language where those can remain in perpetuity and have some flexibility on how they run their businesses with the caveat that there are things they have to give back to the city in terms of additional screening and landscaping and protections for the neighbors. To hopefully incentivize change, we've loosened up some things like the parking demand, allowed additional height in stories for the building, reduced parking, allowed complementary uses such as residential in the I two zone to help monetize the property and reduce some of the burdens in which they have to come to the commission. So we're used to be a twenty thousand square foot development, that now bumps up to fifty thousand square feet. So that's kind of in a nutshell what the changes were. The, you know, as part of the process, we did refer this out to numerous agencies, whether they were within the city of Norwalk, budding towns, state of Connecticut, all came back and any changes or requests were incorporated. But for the most part, there was no concerns raised or flags raised. The last step is just to amend the citywide plan to include this study. And then once that's effective, then the zoning regulations and map regulations are effective, which we're targeting a date of November eighth, which is next Tuesday. Happy to take any questions from the commission, but also keeping in mind, we do have to open this up to the public as well.
Anything at all for Steve? Okay, I mean, we we did go through all of this in vivid detail at our last meeting. All right, if not, Brian, can you explain how the public can access the opportunity to speak?
Sure. So for anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak regarding this application, you can hit the raise your hand tool at the bottom of your screen. And if you're dialed in on a phone, you could hit star nine.
Okay, and I would remind those who wish to speak that these are comments only on adding this to the P O C D. We're not going back to the hearing on the industrial zones themselves.
Diane?
Good evening, Diane Cece, East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. Brian, can I share my screen?
Yeah, hold on one second.
Okay. And while you're helping me with that, I just
Diane, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I was muted, sorry. Okay, I just wanted to, I just started to say that before I start my comments on the P O C D inclusion, I just had two unprocessed notes that I wanted to bring to the attention of the commission and to Mr. Shulman as the chairman. I think I've asked this before too, on behalf of the Neighborhood Association and to Mr. Kleppin as well. Is there any reason that you have why resolutions that come before you as action items can't be posted for the public to see on the city website? And I'm saying resolutions as they're drafted, obviously by staff that you're reading. I know that sometimes you amend them on the fly. And I'm also requesting that sometimes it comes before you where staff is presenting alternative resolutions. For example, one to approve and one to deny. The public is not, those are not available to the public generally. And a lot of times, the real details of what you're approving, especially the the we're as's and the conditions that you're recommending. Those are very important things and we don't get to see those until like thirty seconds before you're about to vote. And so I just asked the commissioners and the chairman to please consider that in the future because once you bring those up, if there's any question, concern or suggestion, we are not allowed to raise our hand again to to raise that point. And then I would say that the, in reference to this particular hearing tonight, the, this was posted as a public hearing, but for the general public to get the materials that Mr. Kleppin just ran you through that were specific to tonight's presentation, those are dated today and I don't believe they were posted to the city website until today. And so Mr. Kleppin may suggest that in different iterations, if you bop around the website screen for industrial zones, you may be able to put those pieces together. It would be difficult for me to do, Mr. Shulman. I would say it would be impossible for the average citizen who's not engaged at a regular, you know, you know, regular intervals with zoning to be able to do that. So I hope you'll consider that for the future. So also what that meant is that the presentation that Mr. Kleppin just gave, I think, incorporated some of the very last minute things that you all agreed on as recently as last week or the week before. And so without having to go back through minutes and watch videos, the only opportunity would have been to see that presentation and posting it today didn't really help. So I'm speaking on behalf of East Norwalk Neighborhood Association to you tonight and I'm urging you. I know, I know this isn't going to happen, but I really feel compelled to have to go on the record again to ask for it, even though I don't think that you will. I'm actually heed what we're asking for, but at this point, because of the concerns with the details, the actual zone changes and everything that you just saw, we are asking that this not be advanced to be included in the P O C T, P O C D and adopted there until some of the concerns that we have been asking for repeatedly since the beginning of this study are addressed. And they still go back to the to the height and bulk schedule. I would like to bring those up, but I think Mr. Shulman said that we can't speak specifically now for any of the actual zoning recommendations. So if that's the case, I won't bring the screen up. I'll just remind you that we had a concern with the height schedule. Where you're taking East Norwalk, areas that are but residential properties, literally are butting them and some that are right across the street, you're increasing the height to what's tantamount to five stories. Staff will tell you it's, you know, fifty feet and then, you know, an additional fifteen feet, but that's actually bringing it to a fifth story. We have repeatedly asked for a number of the objectionable uses to continue to be either honed down in their allowable size or to be removed altogether from special permits. In addition to the fact that we asked for a moratorium on special permits in restricted industrial. Since the restricted industrial technically no longer exists because you approved that prior to tonight's meeting, and I believe that goes into effect next week. We are left now to ask you to do a moratorium on special permits in all of industrial two zone. Because I think technically as of either tonight or next week, East Norwalk becomes an I two zone. And I want to remind you that we're not only talking about the Norton area, we're also talking about the residential areas along Fitch, Rowan, Fort Point, et cetera, all along the railroad tracks there where there's, you know, a lot of residential properties. And I also want to point out to you that before you adopt this into the P O C D, I think that you'll all remember I think that you'll all remember a lot of the public concern and angst and frustration during that process. Whenever the topic of parking came up. And that really was throughout the city. That wasn't limited to, you know, South Milwaukee, East Milwaukee, Wall Street. Throughout the city, this has been an issue. Some of the recommendations that.
Diane, Diane, I I don't want to cut you off. But you're really talking. About what we have already approved. At our meeting two weeks ago.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schulman. I understand it. I'm just trying to give you the rationale. Behind our request to do at this time not to adopt this as an amendment to the P O C D. We think it's counter to the P O C D for all of the same things that you heard ad nauseam for years. Regarding inadequate parking and the and the inequity of parking regulations throughout the city. And so if you attend, if you attend, your intention is to adopt this into the P O C D. We think you're just exacerbating the parking issue that. We were actually looking for some of that to be resolved in the master planning of the city. For example, and I do think this is relative, Mr. Schulman. For example, where you've reduced the parking requirements to encourage. Like commercial parking. You know, for vehicles and things. What ends up happening there is for every reduction you have. You're simply going to have employee and and other vendors and contractors. Then overflowing into the residential neighborhoods. There really isn't an industrial part in East Nowak. Where that's not going to impact. The residents of East Nowak. I mean, literally and directly. You know, right in front of their homes on every side street, there's going to be sightline issues. There's going to be, you know, potential for, you know, emergency vehicle issues. So these are some of the things that I think, you know, that. Before you consider, and again, I know that you're. Probably going to vote to go ahead and advance this thing. I just wanted on the record again. All of the compelling reasons that we would ask you to consider. Not adopting this as an amendment to the P O C D. Please bring it back to the table. Please reconsider the things that the public is asking for. We think these are things that are not going to delay any. You know, what you perceive as, you know. A tax revenue or job creating opportunities in the city. But we do think stepping back, hitting the pause button and correcting some of these things could make this a better plan. And in fact, to take a look at maybe some other uses. That would better suit grand list revenue and jobs. Because as East North Neighborhood Association has pointed out to you guys. At every single opportunity we have to speak to you. When you go down the list of things that are are in I two. And I do want to say thank you to Mr. Kleppen, and we do give credit for the fact that, you know, some really objectionable things came out. But even for the things that are left in there. They don't really suit the purpose of either of those goals. Neither the grand list revenue. Or the type of job creation that I think that you intended when you started to look at this. I have a number of other points, but I'm probably just. Feeding a dead horse here. Just thank you for your time. I'm glad to be able to go on the record and. I appreciate your consideration as always. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else is looking to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool now.
Charlie, go ahead.
Hi, this is Charlie Tony. I lived in in the Village Creek neighborhood in in South Norwalk for twelve years. I now live in Reading. I just wanted to provide a little perspective on the industrial companies of Metta Street from a. From a a neighborhood perspective. You might recall that we formed a group called the Manresa Association. Which was formed to work for a good outcome for the Manresa Power Plant Property. And we approached the city and recommended a a public private partnership to do a. A study of that property and look at all the different possible uses of the property and and the city agreed to that. And we 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 embarked on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project of which. The association, the neighbors, both private and company resources in the area. Put up half the money and the city put out half the money. And it was, I think, a very successful study, and I hope it will still be of use to the city. In the future for Manresa. But the reason I raise that is. When we first started on this and had to raise the seventy five thousand. We approached the companies on Metta Street. And I just want you to know that they stepped up. Including LeJoy's, really their leadership. And they they ended up. Giving us the impetus for raising that our half of the seventy five thousand. And I only raise this to make the point that I think they were they were trying to be. Good neighbors, you know, for the entire area, not just their section, but for all of us down in South Norwalk. That were potentially affected by the Manresa. Power plant situation. So. I only I just want to make the point that they they stepped up then when when we needed their help. They tried to be good neighbors in that regard, and. I just would, I just offer this as. Food for thought, I I believe, as 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 the future unfolds and. These difficult decisions that you're all grappling with come to bear. You know, I believe they'll continue to try to be good neighbors, and I hope you'll. Consider that as you consider. The future of those businesses and how they operate on Metta Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else is looking to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool now. And then while we wait, I just wanted to pull up the D P recommendation on the screen for that to be into the record. And then just in addition to that, this was referred to Harbor. It was referred to Wes Cog, who provided no additional comments. And then if anyone else is looking to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool. Seeing none, Mr. Schulman.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Steve, is there anything further you want to say about this?
No, not unless you guys have any questions.
It appears not. Do at this point, do we have something a recommendation to put up? There you go.
And this was what was mailed out to.
Right.
To you earlier this week. It's very similar to the resolution that you acted on last week, but it just includes the. Has the amendment in there, but nothing really referencing the. Referencing that any change to the zoning at this point in time. Then I can stay keep here back up or however you like. Stay.
All right, is is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Lou, are we just approving the whole thing? Or are we going through one? Item, one chapter at a time, a one.
No, we're not. We're not dealing at all with. The industrial zone study. And recommendations. We've already done that. All we're voting on. Is. Adding the study to the P O P O C D.
Okay, then I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second? It's and Darius seconds. Further discussion? All right, if not, looks like we're ready to vote on this. Can we do a? Roll call?
Sure.
We're voting, we're voting on. Including. The action we took last week in the P O C D. The industrial zone recommendations.
Ms. Wells? Sorry, Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Williams?
I'll go last. Just kidding, yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
I think I'll go last on this one.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lane Galus?
Yes.
And I don't remember, did Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Williams vote?
Yes.
Yes, for Steve Ferguson.
And yes, for Mr. Williams. Okay, Mr. Schulman?
Yes. Okay.
But the the Galen wrote?
Yeah, she was first.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, this is, this has been a very long, somewhat contentious. Process, and I thank you all for your. Your patience and your input. We have a few more of things to discuss. And the first being the accessory dwelling unit letter. From Economic and Community Development. The I'm sorry, the Economic and Community Development Committee. This was on our last agenda, but we ran so late that. We pushed it off to this meeting. Steve. Do you want to go over that?
Now I'm going to pass the torch to Mr. Baker.
Okay.
I think, um, Brian stepped away for a moment.
You're muted, Steve.
Sorry about that. Let me navigate. I'll pull it up in a second. I lost.
Either that or we can come back to it, Steve.
We can do the cannabis one. They're both the same.
Why don't we? Oh, well, here's Brian.
Sorry, just step away for a second.
You were caught, were caught stepping away.
Yeah, diaper emergency, not my own.
This is accessory dwelling unit letter from the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Need a second to pull it.
So Brian, as you pull that up, I'm just recalling when I first started the planning commission, my daughter was a toddler. And. It was always a multitasking event, but we weren't in Zoom, you know, it was rushing to go to the meeting or coming back and seeing, you know. Some cleanup action. So it's good that you're baby, you're able to be there on hand.
I'm not sure, maybe he's not, maybe he's wishing he was somebody.
All right, so I'll pull up the E C D letter first.
Okay. Brian, can you make that just a tad larger?
Sure.
Thank you.
So again, this was a letter addressed to the U S, the commission. Post the adoption of the recent A D U changes. We went back to E C D after that to continue the opt out of Public Act twenty one twenty nine in regards to accessory dwelling units, and they had some additional. Concerns. So kind of what we're thinking is we address those concerns with you. As council continues through opting out of. Of the legislation. So their concerns, I think, lied. I think they have them. Have in this order here. So some of the setbacks. Neighbor notifications. And then sort of design related. So what we did was we drafted up some. New language. For you guys to take a look at, see how you feel about it. And then if you agree with the changes. We can continue. Through the the process of. Making that text amendment.
So Brian, what were the concerns that they mentioned? Regarding setbacks, and I'd like to know particularly what they were referring to.
Sure. So the the concerns were mostly related to detached. So that if you remember when we did the A D U. New regs, we did detached setbacks, which for side and rear, we went down to ten feet for a detached A D U. They preferred that the setback be in keeping with. That particular zone that the structure is in. So for example, if you're in a triple A zone. And you want to construct a detached A D U, you would have to make it thirty feet off your side property line, which is the standard setback for the triple A zone. Double A zone would be twenty feet. A is ten feet. So at that point. Similar to what we had adopted. And then in terms of, I mean, the setback, the the rear yard setback. Wouldn't change that we did a ten foot rear yard setback. That's the the typical rear yard setback for the detached structure. And then regarding lack of neighbor notifications. So what we had proposed in the draft language, which we'll take a look at in a second, was rather than making A D U detached A D U specifically. An administrative approval. Whereas you come into the planning and zoning office and get a permit over the counter, it would instead be a site plan review. Application, which is still in keeping with the state legislation. It just is one additional step where the neighbors are notified. They'd come to the meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and you guys would approve. The detached A D U.
And Brian, haven't you also recommended lowering? The cost of a resident coming in to do that?
Correct. So if you agree that that's a step that we should take as far as requiring a site plan review application, currently, I think we charge. We just updated it, I think, seven hundred and ten dollars for a site plan review application. So as part of this, if you're going to go forward, we would recommend a specific fee for a detached A D U site plan review application. Which would be something like a hundred and sixty dollars, something that's less cost prohibitive for folks who are looking to do this.
Would there be a, there's no public hearing? Is there a public hearing aspect to site plan reviews?
They're discretionary.
They're discretionary, right? So there could be.
Right.
Right.
So I hope you'll pull up the draft language.
Sorry, Mr. Chair Lou, do you have a problem with that? That being reduced, you want to keep it the same or what's this reduction?
No, I I actually like the idea of reducing the cost. So that it's just, it's not something that. Stands in the way of of. Someone considering or moving forward with an A D U. With regard to the setback issues. I I think that's a rational recommendation, adhering to. What the requirements are. In that particular zone. I don't believe that either should. Be a hardship on on property owners. But it might be a hardship. On neighboring homes. If we didn't have a requirement like that. I, in my view, and people may feel differently, in my view, the only issue. Is. The whether to go forward with site plan review. I happen to think it's a reasonable compromise. It's not a full on special. Permit. So we have a little less authority in terms of. Making a decision. And I'm comfortable with that again, in terms of helping to. Maximize the number of people who might consider going forward with. Adding a. Freestanding A D U to their property.
So Lou, the way I understand this, if. So Lou, the way I understand this, if if the applicant. Met all the criteria, just the same with any single family dwelling. Then it would not come before before us, it would just get approved and go through.
No, it would still come before us um for a site plan review. Um but we frankly, if it meets all the requirements, um we have um. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we have a leg to stand on in denying it.
No, the 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 site plan process would give you the ability to um. Look at things like screening, uh those kind of things where you, like in a zoning permit application, staff can't require screening. But through site plan, the commission has the ability to require that, or you could look at the driveway locations, say, that's a problem, you know, those kind of things.
I think we should not have a site plan review as a requirement. Uh the purpose the legislature had in passing this legislation that we're opting out of. Was to make it easier and more accessible for. And I think adding this other step of having to come before the zoning commission. Makes it very much more difficult for people, even if the fee is lowered. Um there are lots of things a neighbor could do on their property that's perfectly legal, uh you know, a neighbor in it. Uh our neighbors subdivided their property, and I didn't like that. You know, I I wish they hadn't, but they had the right to do it. I think the setback requirements are reasonable. But I think a. In order to encourage these A D U's, which is the purpose of the legislation in the first place, we should not have the site. Plan review, I refer you to Councilman Hubelman's letter, which I thought was very, very clear. And articulate on the subject. I have strong objections to the site plan review. It's very difficult to do this in any event. For instance, I could do as a right a at A D U in my house, I can meet all of the criteria. But it's hard, you know, I have to get a drawing, I have to go. Take it to the zoning commission uh for the over the counter review, I have to get everything approved by. You know, the the people who are issuing permits, and it's so hard, I'm not gonna bother to do it. You know, there'd be relatively little demand, and we don't need it at this point. Um so I think the the idea of a site plan review and having all of your neighbors all come in and carry on about it. When you're. It's something that you have a right to do on your property would be a real mistake. I have no problem with the setbacks, I think those are reasonable, to have the setbacks the same as they would be in every other. You know, for for any other structure in that zone. But I object to the site plan review.
Alright, uh then let's see if we can shortcut this. Does anyone object to the setback requirements?
I I don't necessarily object, Ms. Chair, but I, the, based on each zoning, we saw um Brian talked about triple A, double A. Uh but he didn't go down to all the zones, is it ten is the minimum setback, or is it six, or what is it? Is this, is it covers that ten, Brian?
Yes, we'd stop at ten. So essentially, if you get down to those closer zones, like a B residence zone. It would still be a ten-foot setback instead of your your six.
Most of the zones are too little to even have.
I think ten's appropriate, because ten will cut back a lot of the others, the other stuff that, but up to other properties, like. Gail, you said that your neighbors subdivided their property, I think ten feet setback is appropriate. Um I don't think less than that will be. Good.
Nick, you uh wanted to speak?
No, I just object, I do not, not in favor of adding the um changing the setbacks, but.
Well, let's, let's vote on, let's vote on the setbacks. And then, and then we'll vote on the second, we'll vote on the second piece, which which is a a site plan review. Um so again, we could do this part with.
I think Darius has a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Darius.
Yeah, this question is uh mostly to Steve, the uh Cleveland theoretically. Uh when the citywide or the rest of the city um zoning is overhauled, couldn't the setbacks be revisited? Pertaining to A D U's?
Uh yeah, they could, I mean, the key thing, the the most, the most important thing is, right now, council has, as of. Tonight hasn't opted out of the state legislation, so. If if they don't get that done by January one, then this conversation's kind of moot. Um because we're 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 we have the state regulations, but assuming they do so. We can amend our zoning at any point in the future for any of those details. Like if you like, so say there was the worst case scenario where somebody built uh. The, you know, a big A D U ten feet off the property line, and they had bad tenants in there, and it was just a nightmare for the neighbors, then you can revisit. What you want to see going forward, but that might not help that particular neighbor, but at least you could address it to prevent future instances.
Alright, so um motion to. Uh uh um adopt the set, the setbacks uh that currently exist.
Is, is that the, wait, sorry, I was confused by the motion, are you saying?
Means whatever the required setback is, say, in in triple A.
You're saying the change.
Would, yeah, would maintain, and in B would maintain, and in C and.
So it's it's the, it's the proposed change.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right.
And then just, just so this, so this isn't like actually changing the regs, this is just to go forward with the, you know, we'd refer the application out. Uh to all the relevant agencies, and then you would at a later date hold a new public hearing on these uh proposed changes.
Right, right. Okay, so is there a motion to approve? Uh that, okay.
Make that motion, Mr.
Darius has moved, is there a second? Okay, Tammy, yes, Tammy second, Steve second. Um let's uh since there's some, Steve, did you want to say something? I see your hands up.
Just a question for Brian, because I I don't remember top of my head, if the, just thinking, if the commission doesn't move forward with the. Site plane, is there language in the existing or proposed text about required screening between. Uh the property lines, because we could always add that in as another safeguard.
No, there there's not, but we can include that as sort of an alternate.
Alright.
Alright, let's, let's, Steve, why don't you do a roll call on this?
So this is um a motion in favor of requiring a site plan for the A D U.
No, 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 this is in. Of uh.
Increasing setbacks.
Exactly.
I thought you cited on that one already.
No, we have no.
Not increasing setbacks, just.
Setting the setbacks, the existing setbacks in the zoning.
Yeah. Increasing them above what the existing regulations require.
Right.
For A D U's. Uh you want to do a roll call?
Yeah, let's do a roll call.
Uh Ms. Jordan Byron?
I'll go last.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Ms. Well?
I'm gonna abstain.
Mr. Ferguson?
Why me, Steve? Like, seriously, like, like.
I'm going in order as I see on the screen, so every time you guys change.
I'm happy to go next.
Yes, Nick, Nick, now, I'll go, I'll go, yes, yes, for Steve Ferguson, okay?
Alright, okay. Mr. Cantor?
No.
Ms. Lane Gallus?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
I am vehemently opposed to detached A D U's, but I will vote yes on the setbacks.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Sherman?
Yes. So that, alright, so that one's out of the way. Uh the, the uh more contentious one is um. Uh whether uh we um will approve a site plan review. For uh detached uh A D U's. Any further discussion on this?
I just make a comment that I've been to a community in Massachusetts where. Many, many of the homes there have accessory dwellings, and it's almost. Whenever a new house is built, they add an accessory dwelling to it, and. It, it works, so um I I've seen it in action, and I've I've seen it work. So I just throwing that out there, I know this is a hard thing for people to get their heads around.
I echo Galen's sentiment on this topic, especially around. There is a barrier to your neighbors coming and saying no or talking against you. I think staff is totally capable from a design perspective, and there's many things we can do to add. Such as the screening or any of those things in its requirements on the front end of this, that we should be encouraging these, not discouraging them. I know Dick and I will disagree on that, but.
Plus, uh another. Yeah, we should be encouraging them is, we had, there is a desperate need for affordable housing in Norwalk. Housing is really a crisis, so for us to make it more difficult to do these detached A D U's. I think would be a real disservice to the city.
In response to that, what I would say frankly is that uh if someone's building a detached uh A D U. It's not going to be for, in my view, it's not going to be affordable housing, it's going to be market rate housing.
Well, who's gonna pay three thousand dollars a month to live in my backyard? I don't think so. I don't, you know, I mean, the market is not the same for an A D U, if it's market rate as it is for an apartment. In um the Berkeley, you know, I mean, that's, that's totally, I think. Unrealistic.
Alright.
Lazy enough to do that.
You know, you know, Gail mentions a great thought, um and my response to that is. There's individuals out there, there's, there's new starting families. Uh or single persons coming to town that would like to have the atmosphere, the environment that Galen lives in. They don't want to be in Berkeley, they want to have an address where they can go to Marvin. Or go to another elementary school for their potential family and be there temporarily for maybe a year or two. I think there's a a need for uh A D U's for those individuals who don't want to be in the middle of. Downtown Sono on Washington Street, they probably want to be next to one of our homes somewhere where they can spend two or three years. And maybe take care of the property that Galen lives at. My mom's in her seventies, maybe that might be good for her to have someone there to watch over the property. Maybe not at market, maybe below market, maybe above market, you know, everybody has their own uh thoughts about where they want to stay, and I think given. People the opportunity to make that decision kind of shows, not just the diversity of Norwalk, but just the progressive thinking that we have, that if you follow the rules. You know, you can make a way to support those who you live next to, and I think this is just another avenue that some people could take, you know. A strong uh, you know, can take advantage of.
Yeah, it's good for single people moving into the community, uh people who uh like your kid from, who's grown up and. Is back from college for uh to keep older people in the community who could no longer afford to stay in the community. The addition of an A D U there.
Yeah, and Galen, that's the point, Galen, you mentioned a good point, for the older ones to stay in the community, I think it's perfect for them. But to have a mother and father with three kids in the A D U, I don't know about, but for. Individuals that need to supplement their income a little bit, I think this might be perfect for them with proper planning.
I don't think.
I I don't want that cross-conversation, Darius.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, I don't believe that we are discussing A D U's in itself, we are discussing. The site review, and so. You know, do we just get to that?
I am bringing these things up because the site review makes it more difficult, makes it much more less likely there will be A D U's. That's the point, the reason we're discussing A D U's, do we want to encourage them as the legislation was designed to do? Or do we want to make it as difficult as possible, because we're essentially worried about them. I think that's where.
Do we, or do we want to go along with what Steve just said about proper planning? And not impinging on your neighbors' rights. I don't want to beat the divorce up against A D U's, but if we're gonna have them, and we obviously are. Um then they do require some planning, not just putting them.
Yeah, they they have to go to zoning, and we could put uh.
I I understand that, Galen, and I have all the confidence in the world in the zoning people that we have as well. However, I find it um abhorrent that this could happen. And especially if somebody did it with a um um. No, I don't want to say prefab, I forgot what the name of it is, but where a house could just appear the next day.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to.
Alright.
So I I don't, I don't find a site plan review where the only thing that we can do if they are in compliance with zoning. Is to make some suggestions to make it better for their neighbors. I don't find that a burden, especially at a hundred and sixty dollar fee.
Alright, let's uh let's, let's move to a vote, um we have a a motion and and a second. I beg your pardon? Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Um let's do Steve a roll call.
Do you repeat the motion? I don't know what motion is on the floor now, so I appreciate it being repeated.
I'm sorry, did we not have a motion to uh approve uh the uh requirement. Uh for a site plan review?
No, I don't think you did.
I will make the motion to require a.
Okay, I I apologize. Uh thank you, Darius, is there a second? Okay, Tammy second. Um Steve, you want to do a roll call?
Yeah, I'm gonna mix it up this time too, so I'm gonna make completely random. Uh Mr. Rowena?
That wasn't random. I am vehemently against detached A D U's, but I am going to vote in favor of this motion, because I think it's a safeguard that's needed.
Well, this time I did go from top left versus bottom left, so it was, it wasn't. Uh Ms. Lane Gallus?
Yes, I'm voting in favor of the site plan review.
Okay, Mr. Cantor?
I am vehemently in favor of detached A D U's and therefore voting no against this motion.
Okay, Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you for your selection of mixing it up, Steve, because I'm thinking to myself before, you know, thank you for doing this, you know, um.
Anytime.
I'm actually against a site visit, I'm for A D U.
Good, so you vote no?
Yeah, I vote no, make it easy, you know, but increase the price, but that's just Steve, you know, that's just me.
Ms. Wells?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Stay.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Um I'm in favor of A D U's and the process to make it easier for homeowners to erect. Um affordable housing choices, and so I vote no for the additional compliance.
And Mr. Sherman?
Uh I vote yes.
I don't think it carries, correct?
Yeah, it does not, does not carry.
Okay.
So what does that mean? We should have a vote against it, and that won't carry either?
So I think with that action, I mean, it was three to.
Unless I want to change.
So you. Darius want to change?
Probably easier to, if you wanted to take, make a new motion, I mean, you already voted, made a motion in favor of it and voted on that motion, so I think that would be. Little out of order. But either way.
I think it's been defeated, um. Happy about that, but I. The votes weren't there to approve it.
There was three in favor of the motion, four against, and one abstention.
Okay.
That's the vote.
So the 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 package that will go out for referral in public hearing will um based on what you've indicated. Require the setbacks as they're already required for accessory structures within each zone. Um there will be no requirement for site plan approval. But there will be a stipulation that some kind of screening and landscaping is required. Um between property lines, we'll we'll finesse the language a little bit.
Right, okay, and is there anything, because you guys have rights over design in the the staff review based on just the general guidelines. Like, they still need to meet that, is there anything else that needs to be addition, added in addition to the screening? Like, they still need to meet that. Is there anything else that needs to be addition added in addition to the screening? That would be worthwhile.
Brian, anything else you flagged?
Uh, no, not for this. It's generally just tight, um, just that it has to resemble the single family home and and that's generally it.
Steve, can you keep us um apprised of how many applications you get for this? And then do we then, or do you have to report this to the state that we voted on this?
No, we just need to notify the state regarding the opt out. So that that's the one thing. Once it once the council makes a decision, I'm assuming they're going to vote to opt out, then uh we have to notify them in that.
Okay, let's move on on the agenda um uh to uh. Zoning um regulation uh amendments regarding cannabis use in establishments.
Yes, speaking of controversial subjects, might as well just dive into another one head first. Um, so as you.
Can you make that larger, Steve?
Sure. Um, as you know, the state has passed um. Recreational cannabis legislation as well as modified language regarding um. Medical marijuana dispensaries uh. Growing facilities, whether they're smaller or larger, and. They passed legislation and amended it a couple of times already, which has added to some confusion on the. You know, the regulatory end of things. So we've been working pretty closely with common counsel over the past. Um, I don't know if it's been a year, but pretty close to a year. They passed an ordinance of allowing that. The. The ordinance does not permit these establishments to open until the Planning and Zoning Commission adopts. Your regulations that so what you see in front of you and what was distributed to you. Is what they looked at and considered, you know, it was kind of in the back of the. Back of the process as they were making their deliberations. Um. I think the key things, the the big picture key things here is that from the planning and zoning perspective. We've tr- um retail cannabis establishments and dispensaries are treated uh one in the same. They're really only allowed to go uh in the B one and B two zones. Those would be basically, and I I I can show you on the maps in a second, those would be on um. Basically, the Route One Corridor and Main Avenue. That's kind of the idea. The city has through ordinance and requested that we limit that to three. And that's three regardless of whether they are uh just a dispensary and or a hybrid, which is a dispensary plus retail. Or are there's just strictly three retail operations. Right now, just for background. The city does allow um metal medical dispensaries, but only in the B one zone, and that was approved probably. Four years ago now. We we had one applicant uh who saw approval but never went forward with their application. I can tell you that I get at least five inquiries a week from individuals looking to open up uh. Retail establishment as well as we've gotten some interest on the cultivator side. The staff recommendation is to treat the cultivators um. Similar to how we treat manufacturing, because there's no consumption allowed on the premises. It's really just. Kind of like, almost like hydroponics where they're growing um.
So the cultivator doesn't. Doesn't count in with the three, right?
Correct, yes, completely separate use. Um, all of the uses are required to have um security plans that are approved by the uh police chief. So that's to make sure, A, that for the onsite security as well as making sure that there's no theft. Or that's all reduced how they're transporting the goods, because obviously it's a high value product. How they're going to detail all those things and that that will get approved by the the police chief. Um. Let me see what else. Let me scroll down a little bit, and then I can run you through the maps as well. Most of the 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 big area where the um conditions came into place. Were more so around the retail and dispensary type facilities. Um, we have a couple provisions in there and just for a little bit more background. Uh, the city of Danbury passed cannabis uh legislation a few months ago, and I modeled ours off of theirs, which I want to thank um. Uh, their their staff for assisting me with that. We added a couple group provisions that I've already reached. Um, we've had a couple complaints about that already, but these are things that this commission can adjust. One of those was, uh, we didn't allow uh drive-throughs. Speaking with a couple of operators, they indicated that the majority of their sales. Are done online. So somebody, it's kind of like your. C V S where you you order your prescription and you can go through the drive-through at C V S and pick that up. It actually, from one sense, it makes sense to eliminate that clause. Just because that reduces the amount of parking demand, also reduces the amount of people on site, so it gets them in and out quicker. So staff. Really doesn't have an issue with that. That's removed. There's been also some complaints about the minimum lot size we've proposed as well as the lot width. Where they indicate that that's going to eliminate a lot of properties. Um, I, based on the mapping that we've looked at, I don't know if that necessarily pans out that way. The idea behind those two requirements. Is that if they're allowed on larger sites only, that might mean that uh there's less of a parking burden. Going forward because there's shared parking between the operators on the site. But I think that's something you could leave in. Uh, based on what public comment we get during the hearings, you could always remove that or change that at any point in time. So. My recommendation is to leave it in for now, because similar to the ADUs, we have to send this out for referral. There's mandatory timeframes along with that. So the public hearing, I think at the earliest, you'll see it is December. Um. You know, maybe it would be January, but that's kind of thinking at this point in time. Let me um switch over to the map. Can you guys see the map?
Yeah.
Okay, so Amelia um in our office, who was on earlier for one of the applications um. Put this together, so thank you, Amelia. Uh, basically what this exercise shows. And let me blow it. I tried to blow it up a little bit, or I'll talk to it before I blow it up. The the parcels in red, um, make sure I got my legend correct. These are um, it's a reddish-brownish color, but those parcels are within the. The uh B one or P B two zone. That also um exceed a half acre and are at least a hundred feet wide. So that gives you a sense of those parcels. The yellow parcels are also within the B one or B two zone, but they're either. Short the one hundred foot lot width or are less than the half acre requirement. So what um we Amelia did was she tried to come up with some hypothetical uh build-out scenarios. Because it's one thing I neglected to mention is. There is some concern in the uh planning and zoning world that. Even though we put the cap of three on there, that that might not be able to be enforced because it's contrary to some of the zoning enabling legislation. But our thinking is, we're going to leave the caps in and let somebody challenge us on that. But so what we didn't want to just rest on that alone, what we tried to do was map out um. How many we think could be in there, because one of the other requirements is if you have a retail cannabis or a dispensary. You have to be at least a mile away from another establishment like that. So what this exercise shows is these green parcels, there's one here, one here, one here, one here, and one. Up on the border of Wilton. Where somebody said they put a uh at this very location, they put in a retail cannabis establishment. So this green line is a one-mile buffer. So the next one could be the closest one that meets the other criteria is here. And then the next one would be here. The other buffers that I neglected to mention are like churches, schools, um. Other types of uses, but which were sensitive sites identified by council. And working with uh police department, the health department, and others that weighed in. So. These par- properties meet all those buffer requirements. So our thinking is. If that maximum of three was ever challenged, the most we'd see would be five. My guess would be also that there are additional constraints that we haven't included. Based on conversations I've had with property owners, because some property owners. Are not going to allow them on their property, A, based on feedback they've gotten from other tenants, whether that's a larger anchor tenant. Or it would conflict with leasing um requirements with certain tenants as well, where they can't have those types of uses on the property. Or where there might be, you know, while the state of Connecticut is allowing this, it's still not legal federally. So they may run afoul of those issues. So that that's going to restrict the properties further. So that's kind of the big picture in a nutshell. Um. Happy to take questions on the map.
Steve, on the map, if you um. Truly wanted to limit it to three. Uh, could you change the buffers? Could it be a mile and a quarter or a mile and a half?
Certainly, that that would definitely um reduce that down. We could relook at the map to try to get it to three if. But I mean, I I think the one thing you'll run into, which we're not going to know. Until it's actually um codified is what property owners are going to allow on their properties. That's not something we have the ability to map.
Steve, does anything, what happens if a. School moves in, let's say, a thousand feet of the dispensary?
So i- i- if that, if that school opens up after the business is there, the business is going to be allowed to remain. I don't think we have any ability to kick the business out of their location. They would just become nonconforming to that provision and it would affect anybody else who wanted to open up down the road.
Well, what if they sold in that, what if that one business sold to another person and maintaining the same industry, but?
Yeah, I think they would retain their nonconforming status. If they, if they change to a delicatessen from a mari- marijuana facility, they wouldn't then be allowed to go back to the marijuana.
Right. And is there anything we can do around design of these these buildings and the architecture of them?
That's not something we had considered. They are by state statute very muted in terms of. What they can do for signage. So the signage just can't have like um a marijuana leaf on it. It can't have. Bright glowing neon. It's very muted in terms of, it should be a pretty nondescript looking facility.
Gotcha. I don't know if other folks have seen in other states, but some of them are just like, just plain ugly.
Massachusetts might be an example of something more similar.
Where they do better. Okay, I've seen them in Maryland where it's just like the the signs are muted, but it feels very. Like clinical-esque like, I don't know.
I think that's might be part of the intent.
Gotcha.
Steve, to Nick's question, um. Is there anything um that would forbid, for example? Um, let's say you've got a mari- marijuana dispensary, but um. Um, a youth serving facility wants to open up uh less than a thousand feet away. Uh, could we uh say no to them based on this?
That would depend on what um what criteria that. Application came in. If it was a special permit application, you might have some leeway. That would, you know, that would be like a, you're denying it based on um incompatibility with the neighborhood. I have no idea how that court would play out with that, but that's a, if it was a site plan approval, for example, no, you wouldn't have it.
Right. Okay.
I have a couple of questions, Steve. Um. How do these regulations compare to, say, a liquor store? Or are are there any regulations on liquor stores? Do they just consider retail?
Liquor stores are retail, but they do have some um, the only thing similar, I think, is the hours of operation. That's kind of where the other things we mimic, but other than that, this was uh. It's different in terms of, there used to be a lot of municipalities used to regulate liquor establishments, and they would have sometimes a cap on how many or um. Separation distances between them because you just didn't want five liquor stores in a row because it's just a bad feel for the community. So. Um, you know, over time, my inclination is this gets less and less of an issue, and maybe the. Rules get lessened or or restricted, or the market takes care of the saturation point within within a given community.
Yeah, and then um I know that the the state received. Something like fifty thousand applications for people to in some way. Uh, participate in the business of dispensaries, I believe. I could be off on that, but in in the industry, let's just say. So. That Norwalk is going to have three to possibly five of these dispensaries. Have those business owners already been selected by the state and now they would just come here and look to see where they want, where they can put their business?
That process is a little more complex and a little more fluid. We we were talking about that a couple of weeks ago. Um. What, under this scenario, what happens if you got um? Ten complete applications for ten different properties all at the same time? How would you do that? Would it be first come, first served? Would it be screening criteria? So that's one thing that the city governance needs to decide. While you guys are kind of figuring this piece out. So they, I I don't think it's anything that this, your commission wants to deal with, trying to say. You know, under that scenario, you don't want to be the one saying, we're going to pick you versus you. I think that has to get decided elsewhere.
Okay, but but Norwalk has the ability to say, this is how many we want based on the state's regulations.
So so initially, the state had put a cap on where it was one facility. When I'm speaking about like a retail, so one retail facility for every twenty-five thousand residents. So that's where the three came from.
Okay. Surely, I remember we talked about it.
Yeah, that's okay. They ended up um removing that provision from the statute. And so folks in my world have been going back and forth on whether communities can put, actually put a cap on. Whether that's still something that would hold muster. And I don't think there's clear consensus from the legal world because it hasn't been challenged yet.
Steve, remind me, what is, the state is also for communities that allow these uh to open, the the city's going to get. A percentage of revenues, correct, that can go towards certain programs, community programs within the city?
Yeah, that's another facet that that was handled through the um the ordinance that was passed, but I think it's three percent of the sales. There's a three percent local sales tax. And that's intended to go into the communities that were affected by the um, you know, the war war on drug arrests, for lack of better terms, where. But I I I, it's a little. So there's another question that pops up with that in terms of where they're located and how that works. And that that part's a little confusing as well because. There's a whole social equity partnership component to this that weighs in in terms of the state licensing, which is a little bit beyond what your purview is.
Do we have a sense of any estimates of how much money that would be for the for the community?
I can find that out for you. I've heard that um some estimates were pretty high. My guess is the estimates were probably two, we're just my guess.
Thank you. Then there's folks, I think all everyone knows this, but they have to earmark for. Like Steve saying, for certain community programs, it's not just money that's going to go into the city's lush fund or something like that.
All right, Steve, so um is the next step uh scheduling a public hearing on this?
Right, so we'd have to refer out the uh regulations as proposed or with any changes you wanted to see us make before that. Then um we'd schedule the public hearing, get feedback, and then take action on it. And then we'd probably hit the, the key thing would be setting the effective date. At a, at a juncture where we're sure that the uh the city has ironed out um. The, you know, the 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 application process for who's eligible, who's not.
Lou, I would motion to move this to public hearing.
Um.
Second.
Steve, do a question about that. Um. Um, don't we need to? Um, ha- have language that we um all agree on before we hold a public hearing?
Um, you can either, uh, so you can. Go with the language as proposed for the referral process and the public hearing process. You have the ability to modify that language at any point prior to adoption.
Okay, uh, because I I do think we need a little more time to study the language. Um, and take a a good, close look at it to see uh that we're comfortable with it.
Yeah, and and if you. Yeah, and, and if you decide not to move it forward tonight, you can, we can add it to your next agenda and.
Well, I don't have a problem moving, moving a, a public hearing forward, so long as we have enough time between now and the public hearing. To, uh, study the language and maybe at a separate meeting before the public hearing, adopt the language.
Yeah, I mean, I would just be careful, maybe not adopt the language, but, but be at a point where it's the language you're comfortable with.
Right, right, right.
Um, the earliest a public hearing would occur would be, I think at your December eighth meeting. So you do have over a month to hash it out.
Okay.
Lack of, no pun intended.
Well. That was really good, Steve.
So I have no, I have no problem, uh, moving, moving the motion. Um, if, if that's what the commission wants to do, then we can talk about, um, our next steps. So there's a motion on the floor to move this toward public hearing and referring it out. Uh, is there any further discussion of that? All right, then let's call the question. All those in favor of, um, referring it out and, um. Uh, setting a date for public hearing or having the staff set a date for public hearing. Uh, there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? All right, uh, Richard abstains, um, as far as I could see, all the other votes were in favor. Uh, so we'll move, we'll move this forward. Um, Steve, uh, do, do, do we have a quiet enough? Um, agenda for our, uh, uh, next meeting on November sixteenth? To, uh, go over the language, make it an agenda item?
Let me, um, hold on one sec. Let me figure that out. I can share my screen and give you the, the working calendar, which changes by the day. All right, so.
Can you blow that up a bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
So for the sixteenth. Um, that is right there. Uh, I think there's a bunch of items listed there, but I don't. There's two public hearing items, so we might. We might be able to do that. We can always look at, at moving something around too. I know, um. The public hearing for lounge needs to get moving. We have a, which is a pretty simple application. And then, then these are all pretty small potatoes. So.
Okay.
What's the BJ's update?
That is just that, uh, you might recall that the commission had requested. Um, just to get a little background.
Exactly, for, for, for people who aren't involved in that action.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And that could probably be like a twenty minute at the most conversation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
With a stop clock.
Okay, so that's good. Let's just put it on the agenda for the sixteenth somewhere.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, um, we're down to, uh, the easy stuff, uh, approval of the minutes. Of the October nineteenth meeting. Can I have a motion? Uh, Darius has moved. Is there a second? Please? I got, now I got three, uh, well, Steve. Uh, all those in favor of the minutes? Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, minutes are passed unanimously. Uh, Steve, any comments?
Sure, that, and I sent out an email earlier this week and you just saw it on the calendar, November twenty ninth. Is the date for the, um, public presentation of the new zoning regulations. So that'll be a big night, um. And then the next day, the draft will be released to the public of the regulations themselves. Uh, and then we'll, hopefully by that evening, we'll start, have a, like, kind of like a schedule mapped out for. Public presentations, public discussions, as well as individual commission discussions on various topics and things within that. And we'll. We'll get you at the ability to look at the regulations fairly shortly.
Okay, so we'll be able to see them before the public, before the hearing?
We are the client, so we should get first look at these.
Yeah, and, uh, I'm just asking as nicely it, as possible not to share the link out with anybody. It's just for. Commission members to, to view at this point in time.
And that's UTEAL presenting that?
No, that, that's, uh, TPUDC is the consultant for that.
Oh, I'm sorry, right. And so they're. Right, they're just presenting it to us, the planning and zoning?
Yeah, it'll be a public meeting. Um, so I think the idea is that they will, um. Present it to the, uh, the commission. The commission can ask all the questions they want and that would probably be, then the public can watch and. In, in, you know. Pay attention, obviously, and then we'll start the, the public meetings after that date.
Oh, so the public won't be able to comment on the twenty ninth?
Yeah, they're not going to see it. Yeah.
Oh, it's just a special hearing just for us. Totally.
Yeah, so just to give you an idea, we're, I'm thinking adoption like April. So we're not. Putting it out there in December and voting on in January. It's such a big change. It's probably multi-months of meetings and discussions. So. There's zero pressure on that.
Okay, anything else, Steve?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Um. The, um, city is going to be, um. Conducting a study on, um, resiliency for the South Norwalk area. Um, uh, Nick, uh, has a number of times expressed, uh. Interest in the issue of, uh, resiliency. So, uh, I have appointed Nick. To be our representative on that, um, uh, committee once it gets going. Um. We have some other things coming up, uh, as well in the coming weeks. Um. And, um. We will at some point, but I guess not before July. Uh, hopefully be taking, doing a, uh, study of the, uh, Norden site. Uh, any other comments from any of the other directors? Go ahead, Darius.
Uh, uh, can I make a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else? I have some food waiting.
Me too. But, but before you do, let me just remind people that our next meeting is November sixteenth. Now I'd be happy to accept your motion. There's a motion to adjourn on the floor. Is there a second? And Tammy seconds, all those in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you all.